Good evening. We're going to call to order the regular meeting for the Akron Public Schools Board of Education for Monday, April 6, 2020. Roll call, please.
Dr. Akbar?
Yes, here.
Ms. Autry?
Here.
Mr. Bravo?
Present.
Dr. Hall?
Aye.
Mrs. Mansfield?
Here.
Mrs. McKittrick?
Here.
And our student board member, Deessence Jackson from Bookdale High School. Welcome.
Present.
6, 2020. And I saw Ms. Autry giving you a little ooh-ooh over there. So Bookdale 1040 is in the house. So welcome, Deessence. And if everyone can mute their microphone, we're actually going to ask Deessence to lead us in the pledge of allegiance from where you are. So, Deessence, if you wouldn't mind, you can start whenever you are ready.
Okay. The pledge of allegiance, I pledge allegiance to the flag of United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much for doing that. We'll open it up now for community and school reflections. If anyone would like to go ahead, please give me a high sign. And I will also pay attention to the chat feature if you want to let me know that you are raising your hand. But would anyone like to start, or do we have any school, community and school reflections for this week?
Yeah, this is Dr. Hall. If I could jump in, Mr. President.
Yes, sure. And then Ms. Mansfield.
All right, Roger that. Yeah, so over the last week, you know, I've been, so obviously with social distancing, we're really limiting our time sort of being out and about. But I was able to kind of reach out to my cluster to get some feedback as related to online learning and online education. And got a lot of positive feedback from those, in those communications. And so very thankful to hear that. And I think it's testament to the work that's being done by Dr. McWilliams and her team. And so wanted to make sure that we were acknowledging that publicly and again thanking her and her team for all their, all their, all their positive work.
Good. Thank you. Ms. Mansfield?
Just wanted to, if I haven't said before, if board members could take a look at the Higher CLC's livestream every morning. Larry Bender goes live every morning from the school. And what he lacks in, how shall I say, performance and vocal talent, he makes up for in heart and absolute a gift for writing this, how much he misses the students into his performances. So I know Chris Martin also did a cameo appearance, we shall say, last week. One of the teachers did too, and I can't remember who it was right off the top of my head. But it is worth your nine o'clock hour-ish is usually when he's on. So take a look at those. I know I sent Dr. McWilliams Woods a note just to make sure she had taken note of them, and they are just fantastic. So shout out to Mr. Bender for all his hard work in writing those and for his performance.
Can you tell people where they can see those?
Yes.
Yeah.
Those are, I believe it's the Higher CLC. I don't think it's their PTA page. I believe it's the actual school's Facebook page. So if you go to the Facebook page for Higher CLC in the morning, I just have it set up so it notifies me whenever he goes live so that I have my day interrupted by that happiness.
Good. Thank you. I don't see any other chat messages. Is there anyone else that would like to share? If not, Deessence, do you have something for us as well?
I think Ms. President, Ms. Autry had.
Yeah, just briefly, again, I've been in contact with the schools in the East Cluster via email over this last weekend. Again, just piggybacking on what Dr. Hall said, really good positive feedback, in particular Robinson's CLC. You know, my personal concern with them being, you know, high risk already in many areas. But they really utilize the opportunity to disconnect on an even more personal level with staff, I know, or with families. I know they're making personal calls. They're walking families and grandparents through the process, you know, the online learning and all things technology. So, and they were really appreciative, and they really wanted me to just, you know, send that thanks to the leadership because we were able to just have that transition to the online learning in a way that, I mean, if you don't have that smooth transition, then you really can't appreciate it for what it is when you, you know, you do have it. So from the East Cluster, very appreciative and thanks to the leadership.
Good. Thank you very much. Anyone else? And I would also note that it looks like we lost Deessence for a minute. So we'll see if she comes back on. If she doesn't come back on, we'll save her a minute or two to give her report out from Bookdale when she is able to join us again. Does anybody else have anything for community and school reflections?
Very quickly, I'd like to say that I saw the I Promise documentary at the drive-in last week, and it was wonderful. It's heartbreaking and poignant and ultimately triumphant. So it's very well done. If you get a chance, make sure you see it.
Thank you for bringing that up, Valerie. I know a number of us were there. NJ was parked right next to me, and I was trying not to look his way so he didn't see all my tears because I was bawling most of the time. But it was very beautiful, very well done. As you said, very poignant, really well done. And I hope people can tune into Quibi. It launches today, so eight o'clock. And I think you can start logging on at 7:30 for people that are wanting to see it. So thanks for bringing that up. Anyone else for community and school reflections? I see Deessence just joined us. Deessence, did you have something to share from Bookdale?
To say, first off, by saying my name, hi, I'm Deessence Jackson. I'm a freshman.
All right, I think we may be having some difficulties, technical difficulties here. So we will come back to Deessence if we get that worked out. For the moment, why don't we go ahead and move on, and we'll give Deessence a chance to rejoin us when she has a chance. We have community and school reflections. Hearing no one else, going once, going twice. All right, we have no request to address the board, but we do have a need to approve meeting minutes from three prior meetings. The special meeting from March 19, 2020, our regular meeting minutes from March 23, 2020, and special meeting minutes from April 2, 2020. And I will entertain a motion for the approval of those three sets of meeting minutes.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion from Valerie, a second from Diana. Any comments, questions, or discussion on the meeting minutes? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Mansfield?
Yes.
Mrs. McKittrick?
Yes.
Dr. Akbar?
Yes.
Ms. Autry?
Yes.
Bravo?
Yes.
Dr. Hall?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you all. We'll move on to superintendent's recommendations personnel.
Mr. President, I wish to recommend approval of the personnel recommendations presented in categories five through 16. I would also like to make note under item 16.1 that we regret to report the death of Emily Gifford, an early learning program speech therapist at Stewart who passed away on Saturday, March 21st. She's been an employee of Akron Public Schools since September of 2007. And in 2017, she was actually a finalist for our Teacher of the Year. So we certainly send condolences to her family.
Thank you. We'll entertain a motion for approval of the personnel recommendations.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion from Dr. Akbar and a second from Ms. Mansfield. Any comments, questions, or discussion on the personnel recommendation? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Mrs. McKittrick?
Yes.
Dr. Akbar?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander? Ms. Autry?
Yes.
Mr. Bravo?
Yes.
Dr. Hall?
Aye.
Mrs. Mansfield?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. President? You'll pause for one second. I'm going to dial Bruce Alexander in. He won't be technically a part of the board meeting at this point, but at least he can hear. He's having difficulties logging on.
Okay, thank you. We'll wait.
Hey, I'm going to let you listen in. We are live streaming now. You want to go to the first invite? Nope. I'll send you an invite, Bruce. And for now, I'm going to mute you, and we're in the middle of business recommendations. Thank you. All right, Mr. President, I'm going to send him another invite to make sure he has it, but.
So, thank you. Someone is, if we're getting muted.
I'm in the car now.
Is this Deessence?
Yes.
Hi, Deessence. Thank you for joining us. Give us a minute, and we'll come back to you for your report from Bookdale.
Okay.
If you could just mute, I'm probably waiting, that'd be great. And we're going to turn it over to the superintendent for consent agenda recommendations.
Yes, Mr. President, I wish to approve the motion presented in category 21.
Thank you. We'll take a motion on the consent agenda item.
So moved. Second.
Thank you. We have a motion by Mrs. Mansfield and a second by Mrs. McKittrick. Any comments, questions, or discussion on consent agenda? Also, for the record, I note that Bruce Alexander has joined us. We still have a motion and a second on consent agenda. Roll call, please.
Dr. Akbar?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Ms. Autry?
Yes.
Mr. Bravo?
Yes.
Dr. Hall?
Aye.
Mrs. Mansfield?
Yes.
Mrs. McKittrick?
Yes.
Thank you.
And finally, Mr. President, I wish to recommend approval of the Business Affairs Recommendations presented in category 23.
Thank you. We'll take a motion on Business Affairs items.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Alexander, a second by Mrs. Autry, or Mrs. McKittrick. Any comments, question, or discussion on Business Affairs recommendations? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Ms. Autry?
Yes.
Mr. Bravo?
Yes.
Dr. Hall?
Aye.
Mrs. Mansfield?
Yes.
Mrs. McKittrick?
Yes.
Dr. Akbar?
Yes.
Thank you.
And I do have to thank you all for bearing with me as we do that. It's a little difficult in this environment to catch all of those. So if I misattribute something, please let me know. I'm doing my best from this end. Before we move into superintendent's report, I'd like to give a chance for Deessence to give a report out from Bookdale. So, Deessence, if you're still on the call, which it looks like you are, please feel free to go ahead and report out.
Okay. Hi, I am Deessence Jackson. I am a freshman at Bookdale CLC, and I am in the sports medicine pathway. I would like to share APS students' experiences with the APS Connected Learning, Online Learning Environment. The APS Connected Learning Environment allows students to learn at their own pace and balance their time between subjects. The Connected Online Learning Environment is experienced by all levels. My little brother is a first grader at Schumacher CLC. His teacher, Ms. Ness, recorded a video of herself reading the book, The Three Shapely Pigs. After she read the book, students answered questions about the story in the Google Classroom. One of my favorite online classes is Ms. Shannon Turk's E.L.A. class. Ms. Turk's lessons are an echo, and they are well-planned in detail. For example, the class was assigned a five-paragraph report. Students had the option to choose different topics for each paragraph. One of the topics I chose was where do I see myself in five years? In five years, I will be a sophomore at Howard University studying biology. My career goal is to become an OBGYN. I want to get out in the world and explore different cultures and places. For the last three weeks, I understand that 98% of sixth graders connected into their Google Drive to the Online Learning Environment. They have the highest percentage of students in all grade levels. I am a freshman, and 96% of us have connected to the Online Learning Environment. I challenge all freshmen to log into the Connected Online Learning Environment to increase our percentage to 99%. 85% of seniors have logged into the Connected Learning Environment. Today is the last day of the third grading period. I'm sure my seniors are logging in today to complete their final assignments. I emphasize with students during this time who are in credit recovery classes to make sure they graduate on time. I'm sure it's more difficult with them having to earn all their credits without the face-to-face support from teachers and counselors. The student opinion is that it's better when we can learn from our teachers face-to-face because nothing beats human interaction. We all are better when we have physical human interaction. Physical interaction is a big part of senior year. Many seniors have mixed emotions about high school graduation ceremonies, prom, and not being able to play sports their last year. Hopefully, after the pandemic has cleared, seniors will be able to participate in some of the seniors' traditions like prom and high school graduation ceremonies. On the behalf of student board members, we wish help to all APS students, staff, the families, and the Akron community.
Thank you so much for the report.
Good job.
You're getting a lot of visual applause from around the table. Thank you.
Thank you.
Superintendent's report?
Just one item, just a reminder that this is, this week, we're distributing food to the students in the community. Next week is spring break, so we will not be distributing food. But we have, on our website, we have listed and with posters at each other's distribution sites, the other sites in the community who will be distributing food over spring break. We have to also retool and change how we're distributing food and ordering some more, some more food so we can come back the following week and make sure that we're meeting the needs of the community.
Great. And I have no report tonight other than to wish everyone a healthy and safe week as we head into spring break. And as the superintendent said, this is a chance for us, both academically and operationally, to look at where we can improve over the next few weeks. So we'll spend some time doing that. We really appreciate everyone's patience. We appreciate the community jumping in where they can to help us and help our children and our families. So thank you to our board members, to the administration and staff, and certainly to the community for helping to pick up the pieces. And we hopefully will come back after spring break stronger than we were before it. So appreciate everyone's hard work. Treasurers' report?
No report this evening.
Thank you. At this time, we do have a need for an executive session pursuant to Ohio Revised Code Section 122.21.22G1 to discuss the employment of personnel. Are there any other reasons, Mr. Superintendent or Mr. Treasurer, for which we need to entertain a motion for executive session?
I believe the other one is, could potentially be pending litigation.
121.22G4, Ms. Fidel?
Yes.
121.22G4 to discuss pending or imminent litigation? Are there any other reasons? Thank you, Ms. Mansfield. I am so sorry I skipped over community reports. Before we entertain that motion, let me back up. I scrolled too quickly on my agenda over here. Legal contracts and board policy.
No report. No report.
Thank you. Finance and capital management.
No report, but we'll resume meeting again. I think we agree on this Wednesday with Ms. Autry and Ms. Johnson.
Thank you so much. Instructional policy and student achievement. No report for instructional policy and achievement?
Yes, we do have a report.
Okay.
Very quickly, just a couple of things. First of all, of course, want to thank the amazing teachers and principals for flipping the district from a brick-and-mortar blended learning to 100% online learning. And 95% of students have connected into their learning resources. And each student who hasn't yet connected will be assigned a staff member called a connector. And those connectors will reach out to the families and the students to help provide support, any kind of troubleshooting necessary for problems with their devices, and help to the family to structure a learning environment at home to optimize the student's ability to learn. Any day this past week, we had 60 to 75% of students working on their schoolwork, and they had the entire week to complete their work. So it's great to see that so many students every single day are going in and engaging in their work. Mrs. Mansfield, anything else?
I think that covers it. I would just encourage families that still are having issues to please reach out. I know that they've reached out to some of the board members. I know that they've reached out through Carla Chapman and that a lot of folks are being reached that way. But please don't hesitate. I know that, you know, we've all heard from people who've had some struggles. And, you know, there's some misunderstandings too. This, this isn't, this week wasn't supposed to be, you know, an assignment from every teacher or an assignment from every, it shouldn't be like an eight-hour class load. We want people to get used to this online learning, teachers as well as students, right? Because I'm just grateful I don't have anybody in like geometry or stats right now because I would lose my mind trying to help with those classes. So please just, you know, do some enrichment over the break and be ready to come back next week.
Hey, this is Dr. Hall. I have a couple of clarification questions, if I may, Mr. President.
Sorry, I was muted. Yes, go ahead.
Roger that. Thank you. So just those two numbers that we talked about, that 95% number and the, and one was 95%, and the second number was, I think the range was 60 to 75%. Can I just get a clarification on what those two numbers were again, one more time?
Would you like me to respond, Mrs. Mansfield?
Sure, go ahead. I think I understand the difference. I think one is that they've logged on overall, and the other was 60 to 75% on any given day we're working. But just go ahead.
That's correct. That's correct. The 95% is 95% of our 21,000 students have connected into their learning portal and their, either their Google Classroom or something in Google where their assignments are in the three-week period. So we've heard from and connected with 95% of our students. Then the second number they provided is any given day, at the end of the day, we're seeing anywhere, depending on the day, 60 to 75% of the students are connecting into their work on a daily basis. And the assignments aren't assigned to be done, you know, these assignments aren't due on Tuesday, and these assignments aren't due Wednesday. There are a week worth of lessons, and students have a week to complete them. So that's why it's great to see 60 to 75% of the students engaged every single day because they actually can take a day off and come back the next day, and that's okay because they have the whole week to do their lessons.
Gotcha, gotcha. So, okay, so just one follow-up. So, and thank you for that, Dr. McWilliams Woods. So the 95% of students, so, so is that, so that's students that have, that have responded to the invite to, to join the Google platform? Is that, and I know, I know I'm restating that, but is that accurate?
They have done some type of activity in the past three weeks in, either in our educational software packages, or they have joined a Google Classroom. There's been some kind of activity in their Chromebook with a learning resource. So that doesn't mean a kid who has been playing on something, you know, outside. We don't count that. It's only when they're connecting into some type of learning activity that we've posted. We have connected with 95% of our students over that three-week period.
Okay, Roger that. And then one more follow-up. So is that 95%? Does that correlate, I mean, is there, is there any correlation with attendance or how we're currently tracking attendance?
We are tracking attendance for the week. So we, we only tracked, the Department of Education actually had the, two weeks prior to that were considered more like calamity kind of days. So our actual attendance started this week. And we took different tiers of attendance, whether, how much they were engaged, whether it was full engagement with their assignments or partial, or we haven't heard from students at all. But it was only capturing this past week. So there are 890 students that have now been assigned to those connectors that we haven't connected with and that we're trying to track down and make sure that the family, that we provide any support to get the students engaged.
Gotcha, gotcha. And then, I'm sorry, I did have one more follow-up. So, so, and I think, I think you were talking to this just this minute ago. So it sounded, it sounded like the state is kind of redefining how they, how they count attendance now, now that we're in this online learning environment. Can you just share with the group sort of, you know, how the state's now, as of today, now defining attendance?
We, actually, we were expecting some guidance over the weekend because we received other guidance from the state over the weekend, but they didn't provide guidance for the rest of the year yet on attendance. So we're expecting to hear that sometime this week now that the governor has continued and extended this learning-from-home order. We haven't received the guidance yet from the state on how attendance will be counted all the way through May 1, which is when the order ends.
Okay. Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
I like that qualifier, Ms. Dr. Hall, just because I think that that's part of this right now too, is you said, what's the guidance as of this moment? Because a lot of things have changed. And I, I think all those questions are really valid, and parents can also read that in case they didn't catch everything. Our website is fantastically comprehensive, I think, on explaining attendance, explaining assignments, explaining the grading periods and all those bits and pieces. So I think that you perfectly captured it, not only in your questions, but also in your statement of as of this moment.
Good call. Thank you. Good questions. Anything else for the Instructional Policy Student Achievement Committee?
I do have a quick question, follow-up to Dr. McWilliams Woods. So those connectors, are those actual teachers, or is that some other position that's doing that particular task of reaching out? Or does it vary? It actually varies. It's, some are teachers, some are educational assistants, some are... It actually varies. It's, some are teachers, some are educational assistants, some are our climate. We have some climate team members that help support the social-emotional learning of students. Some could be educational assistants. It's a combination, once the principals look at who they had on their staff that could serve in this role and who maybe already had relationships with some of the families. Our family liaisons are also connectors in that way, so that they tried to really match up the faculty and the staff who would be the best connectors with families.
Hey, this is Dr. Hall. I just had, I have one more question. So, and I said that, so I know that we've got students, and this is sort of, sort of the tough part of this, right? We've got students who have home environments that are not conducive to signing on and doing online learning, or, or at a minimum, it's very challenging for those, for those kids. And I'm just really worried about those kids. And so I'm just, so not, not that I'm asking for anybody to answer the question today, just, I just want to put it out there that, that, that we all know on this call, you know, that there, that there will be students, maybe a smarter, but, but there will be students who are not gonna, are not gonna engage enough to really be able to be meaningfully educated through this time. And I'm just wondering, you know, I guess the ask is that we kind of think through what, if anything, we can do for those students, you know? So again, this is Akron, this is an urban environment. We have some tough, some tough households. And, you know, as you all know, you know, oftentimes these students come to school, and school is their refuge, and so, and their safe place. And so I just ask that we kind of start to, and I'm sure we've already thought about this, but I just would like to sort of get that, you know, keep that part of the, the discussion alive and thinking about sort of what we do for those students. Is there any sort of extenuating set of interventions we can put in place for those students? So again, I don't, I don't have the answers. It just, I just wanted to share that concern with this group, and, and as we sort of move forward, you know, just, you know, really be able to come back around to this conversation again.
Dr. McWilliams Woods, can you maybe talk about some of the information and guidance that went out even in today's academic update email about the case management and the teams and the approaches to Dr. Hall's point about how we're gonna approach families and students that are having a difficult time connecting?
Yeah, the role of that connector, it really isn't just to help get them connected in terms of just their educational learning process or their technology. They really are, first and foremost, trying to make sure the families are okay, making sure the students are okay, getting them connected with any of the resources, like through our 211 Help Number through the United Way for our community. They're looking at food resources for the family, any kind of housing assistance. Carla Chapman, as our Director of Community Relations, is training and doing kind of ongoing training with this group to make sure they know how to make those referrals to families. And then obviously, they can be referred to our counselors and some of our case management staff that do this for a living, like Carla's background, to help with more intensive cases. So, so I think we have, our approach is very much like you're saying, Dr. Hall, is during this particular time is to be supportive and to wrap our APS kind of arms around the families versus any kind of, you know, academic hammer where we're trying to, you know, give families a hard time if they're not connecting. We know there's some incredible barriers right now, and we want to be that support and that foundation and continue to be sort of the stable force in the children's and the family's life during this time.
Thank you so much. I appreciate that.
Good, thank you. Anything else for instructional policy or student achievement? Hearing none, then again, we do need, have a need for executive session pursuant to Ohio Revised Code Section 121.22G1 to consider the appointment and compensation of public employees or officials, and 121.22G3 to consult with our attorney concerning disputes involving the district that is a subject of pending or imminent litigation, and I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion from Mr. Alexander, a second from Dr. Akbar, to recess into executive session. Are there any final comments, questions, or discussion before we do so? We just remind you when we do that we are going to log out of this session, so please completely log out of this session, and then we will re, then we will rejoin in the session that has been set up for executive session. And then when we're finished, if you would go back to your calendar and invite, you'll see the link to rejoin this session because it will disappear from that homepage.
So use your calendar invite to go back to the session if you can. Any final comments, questions, or discussion?
Hearing none, roll call, please. Ms. Autry?
Yes.
Mr. Bravo?
Yes.
Dr. Hall? Mrs. Mansfield?
Aye.
Yes.
Mrs. McKittrick?
Yes.
Dr. Akbar? Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, we'd like to thank the public for joining us. We will return to public session following executive session, so we'll see you all. All right, we are back into our regular session, board meeting, regular board meeting for Monday, April 6th, 2020. We have no action following our executive session. Do we have any unfinished business to come before the board? New business to come before the board? Hearing none, I will entertain a motion to adjourn this meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion by Mr. Akbar and a second by Mrs. McKittrick. All in favor of adjourning this meeting signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed, same sign? All right, we are adjourned. Thank you so much, and have a good evening.
Thank you.
Bye-bye.
Stay safe, everyone.
All right, thank you.
Bye.
Gotcha, I was gonna say aye for the first time ever.